Quarter Monday, June twenty-four, twenty-four, six at five. Can you get a roll call, please?
Holonka Musa?
Here.
Henry Foreman?
Here.
Jason Hampton?
Here.
Steve Guy?
Here.
Danny Derry?
Thank you.
Our first item is approval of the agenda, but we've been asked to remove item uh ten A from new business. Will you approve? There is a discussion on the agenda. None, pass or please vote. That's approved. First item is review of ICAF and I am going to be seat A running most.
Good evening. All right, in front of you, you have part of the package there and gave you it is a breakdown of the insurance print of some changes that are being made this year. So as you're probably all aware, of the past probably five years of large increases, we're in a bit of an insurance crisis right now. But the amount of weather losses that we're having along with some other factors that are making it so the insurance companies are having terrible savings solvent at this point. The amount of losses that are being paid out from the storms that we're having, they're they need to collect more premiums. So we're seeing quite a bit larger increases and I have warned us really early on that we're going to take about a thirty percent and it'd be about forty percent overall and there's a few different factors, so I'll walk through that. When I talk about the insurance crisis, I mentioned that term because in nineteen eighty-six, we were in the same crisis, but it was about liability. And that's actually when I CAF was created because we're getting to the point that we couldn't find markets that were bred public entities because of the liability exposure of them. Now we're on the other side. We still have the liability that's kind of a little bit crazy right now, but we also have a profit side. We're having a one billion dollar weather event every eight days in the United States. Last year it was every eighteen days, so we improved that, but yeah, pretty hot. So we're continuing to have weather and unfortunately, there's just not enough premiums being taken to pay for those losses. So it's not only weather, though, it's inflation costs, obviously, as we know, everything has gone up in cost, whether it be the labor side of things or just the actual materials along with the auto side. That's also taking a large increase this year, and that's mainly because of parts, the availability of cars, cost of cars, all those things factor into it. But then you have social inflation, you have the the side of things from the just the contractors, as you guys are well aware, everything costs more as a public entity to rebuild, but also contractors charge a higher rate when it comes to insurance. And unfortunately, it's something that we can't get around, but I had a personal experience where in twenty twenty with the duration, my roof was going to cost, I think it was thirty-two thousand for a place, and then I didn't have enough damage to actually have a replacement with duration. So two years later, I actually had to fix it on my own. It cost nineteen thousand when the insurance company wasn't involved. So we're dealing with those type of social inflations along with attorney tactics, you know, just increasing litigation litigation costs. We have litigation funding issues where we're actually having people fund lawsuits so that they can have a bigger payout and they're splitting the proceeds with with the plan of naming a public settlement about how they view public entities along with just businesses and how we should have a higher level of care and 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 that term is due more. And then desensitization, desensitization to the larger jury verdicts. We're seeing nuclear verdicts of your ten million, but thermal nuclear is now a hundred million, which usually aren't paid, but they're just kind of a hey, look what we did here. So we're kind of running into all those issues. And then new this year, newer to us talking about is reinsurance. Reinsurance has always been part of it, so reinsurance, obviously insurance and insurance companies. But until recently, reinsurance didn't get involved in how the insurance companies really did business. But now they're coming back and saying, this is what we're going to accept. This is the conditions we're going to accept it under. These are the premiums you're getting accepted at. So they're really dictating what the insurance companies are going to do. And that really impact ICAF here because ICAF obviously is a pool of your along with other members premiums and you're your own insurance company, so you aren't technically insurance company. So your your reinsurance is very much dictating what they do. And so this year they came back and they said, we want a thirty percent increase minimum. And on top of that, and that's kind of overall the policy, but on top of that, we want to decrease the liability on cyber. So they took it from one million to two fifty for for cyber crimes. So figure that to be your data compromise side. So on a cyber liability, cyber crime, they took to a hundred thousand. To prevent ransomware. So right now we have, we're getting another focus CFC, you've got some more coverage, you've got some public entities and schools are are being targeted quite a bit on the cyber side. They also took Russia and Ukraine out. They excluded them as part of the cyber coverage. So we get attacked by them kind of on a large mass basis. Those those things are excluded. The big thing for us this year is that they changed our wind hail deductible to two percent. And it's a little bit interesting how ICAF is doing any comparison to other insurance companies. Most insurance companies are going to go wind hail percentage deductible. And what that means is the percentage of the building that gets saved. So a two percent deductible on a hundred thousand dollar buildings, two thousand. We obviously have much, much larger buildings than that. The difference with ICAF is ICAF is saying that that only applies if it's a catastrophic event and ISO will determine that. And so a catastrophic event would be the tornado that we had here a few weeks ago. But if it's just some regular wind hail, then we just have our normal five thousand dollar deductible. So it's a little bit different there. With the schools, it's different completely because they don't have that catastrophic language in there. So they just have a percentage wind hail deductible. So what we presented to the schools and we have the available availability for the city, is that you are deductible buy down. Where we buy down that two percent to a much lower, something you're more, you know, comfortable with. So we don't give you that too. So we're still waiting on getting those quotes back for us in Nevada and having that catastrophic loss language in there. I don't think it probably makes sense, but we're still going to obviously present it once we get those numbers in. The other thing that they've done is added a cosmetic damage exclusion, which means I it gets extended up mainly to the opposite of the metal roofs and siding that there is no coverage for that. Actually, they have to add water intrusion and then roofs over fifteen years will be actual cash value. So they're decreasing, you know, the amount of coverage there for those events that we're seeing more and more happen, which are the the wind and hail. And then they added a limitation to communitys, which is kind of pretty, I remember right now after COVID. So changes in coverage, a big part, obviously, they took fifty percent on the property. For us, it's been a little bit more because we added the field house in there. So took about eighteen million dollars up on the property and a point eight of that was the field house. We do have the waste bar treatment plant that we still need to add when that is under its final completion. But our current waste bar treatment plan is nineteen million. What I'm trying to do is work with ICAF and Jordan and the contractor to see how much of that sixty-eight million dollars for that project do we actually need to insure? I mean, if you go out there, there's a ton of concrete and specifically the roads. And so I we don't need to cover those type of things. So we're trying to kind of figure out like how can we lessen the amount that we are insuring out there to get the coverage that we need. The other large increase was on the auto. And as I mentioned, the cost to repair autos right now is going through the roof. So most of our losses, ninety-five percent of our losses are just your triggers rather than total loss. But even the total loss is kind of controversial right now because there's still a lack of vehicles out there to find, you know, or replacement. So there's a fifty percent increase on the auto set too. Those fifty percent increases were dictated by the reinsurance company. Those are things that ICAF couldn't make a choice on. If they wanted reinsurance, that's kind of what they've had to propose. So unfortunately, we also had to go with that. So if you look at that spreadsheet, we ended up at about a forty percent increase. That's kind of kind of where those things came from. The other potentially that we printed off, but I believe it's somewhere in your packet, but the the losses that we've had in the past couple of years. So this last year, we had about sixty-three thousand dollars in losses and that's pretty much during that one with comp loss. A gentleman in streets getting into a vehicle that hurt his knee, I believe, close. Now you had two other smaller losses. Overall, you guys have a great group comp experience, so I'm not concerned that we have any trends there. And then I just had a small auto loss, snow blower, vehicle. The only other thing I'll mention is on the liability side. We see this a lot with our public entities, just a reminder, and I say this obviously to the council and to all the department heads. You'll use ICAF when it comes to, if you find out about something, let ICAF make a decide decision on who is like, well, just make sure it fits from dry hat and don't accept liability before before ICAF knows about it. Those things kind of, you guys get run into a lot with, you know, whether it be back at the sewer and the houses and those type of things. Just make sure that that we run it through ICAF and and let them make that deciding factor and you ready to go. So what I still have to present to to Jordan is still a deductible buy down quote. We're still waiting on another other cyber option. So there's still, it's hard to kind of get votes in this market right now just because there's limited options and they're really trying to figure out who we want to do business with and public entities. And the most exciting thing for them to do with cyber is you probably all heard about the Nipper House. And they didn't want schools to start getting hit and that was a complete disaster. But their insurance is a big part of getting that cleaned up too, so. Questions you have for me?
Do we have any options to increase the deductible to lower the cost to that company when you're talking about municipality or something? I can increase my deductible to make my monthly payment less.
Yeah, so there's a certain minimum rate that they have to collect even just kind of cover their basis. And we, ICAF has kept that rate pretty much at that, especially for us, because we haven't had much of a loss history in Nevada. And that's the difference kind of between a pool where it'll be more of a margin when it comes to a regular insurance company. So where we can increase our five thousand dollar all turtle deductible to ten thousand, it doesn't make that much of a difference. We've quoted it before and it saves us like a thousand dollars. So in the end, it it just doesn't make any difference.
What's the general outlook? You know, I had everybody get hammered this year. Is this going to continue year upon year? Is it going to level off? What are people thinking?
So we were hoping that twenty twenty-four would be calm. And if you realize in your own personal insurance, we don't have a whole lot of markets left in Iowa. We are per capita worse than any other state in the country, even worse than Florida with hurricanes. And if you think about what's going on in Florida right now, they're having issues finding options for insurance or even getting the insurance companies to pay. And a lot of people are paying twenty-four thousand dollars a year for their homeowner's insurance. If they choose to pay that, then a lot of them are self-insured. But we're just as bad here right now. Most of the companies that have more returns, which are just stopping to write insurance temporarily. We're hoping to open up at the beginning of twenty twenty-five and that's not looking super feasible at this time. But there's been multiple markets and we just had another one last week that have just pulled out of the state altogether and have said, homeowners insurance is not a viable option in Iowa. And so we're just not going to write here anymore. And so that's what we're concerned with. I'm to the point that I'm talking to boards of banks of just what are you guys going to do when we don't have the option to even insure the property that you want to write a law? And we talked about it, all the interest rates and the things that are hurdles for people to write, to get a home right. Like insurance is going to be very much one of those things. And if you think about it, like Forest Place Insurance is still written through an insurance company, so they they aren't going to have that option at some point. We would hope it would level off, but you know, we look at this and we kind of talk about the deductibles and the injuries. And it's a huge amount of money, obviously, Nevada got completely wiped out. You know, for us to to look at that two percent, but I kind of use the example of the Westin Mooney School District. They had just a regular weather event with wind and hail and the roofs alone on the building through almost ten million. And they're did a hose fifty thousand and like they just, it's not feasible long term anymore. So we just have to kind of figure out something else. But on the other hand, it's not feasible for personal or commercial clients either. So we're just trying to kind of figure out how to make this all work and make it be an option. But does wind hail go to a government program like flood does? You know, it might be that way someday that you're just paying for liability and fire on your homeowner's insurance. And I would say there's some other things here, but other than
Is there anything else? Someone else?
Thank you.
Time to send the public hearings, public hearing A, vacation of city property, red away easement for Story County Hospital will hold under public hearing. Aaron, did you receive any comment? So anyone here to speak in the public hearing about the city property, Story County Hospital? Seeing none will close public hearing, moving us to resolution number ninety-one, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution to vacate, debate climate interest and right of way permit and easement. Would you prefer a second? Steve, Sandy, any discussion on that? Seeing none, pass or please vote. That is approved, which takes us into the consent agenda. Any item may be removed for second consideration. Will be approved.
Second.
Jason and Melissa, any discussion on consent agenda? Seeing none, pass or please vote. That's approved. There's reappointments in front of you to the park board or case line, Vlad Miller. Would you approve?
Second.
Sandy, any discussion on appointments?
Thank them for their service.
Another discussion, pass or please vote. As approved, take this into the public forum. Time to decide for comments on the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action to be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. On the first thing in the public forum is proclamation for person our creation month. Obviously, it's something our community really supports and we've got a great staff that does a great job of parsing it. So it'll be probably mentioned the month, we won't read it to you, but it's in fact. And I know more else to do a great job than going to endorse online and elsewhere. So with that, continuing in the public forum, we have Rod Fineson will have you go up to the podium there, Rod, and you can head to the council.
Thank you for your time. It will be brief. Well, my situation is for four years, I live in six twenty-one South there, T Street. I've had part of my backyard not mowed and I've had wildlife in it. I even had a pheasant there last year that had a nest right here in the Bay of Iowa. Now, so far they haven't come yet, but my question is, all of a sudden now someone doesn't like it anymore. So they complained about it, so I told them to mow it by Wednesday. And Ryan hasn't been good to deal with. I want to give you credit for that. He's not been a problem for me. So he's just doing his job. What I find really very, very grossly off base is calling, well, I have offensive vegetation. Makes it sound like I'm working raising marijuana or something. That's what I call offense. I don't call regular grass. If you saw it, there's no weeds, there's nothing there. You might find, you might, you have to be careful when you walk through grass, make sure you don't step on a feather. That's how good this is. But if I'm supposed to mow it by Wednesday, they're just going to go to go pot. I know they can go somewhere. I understand that, but it's been, it's been working. No one can even see my backyard unless they walk over someone else's property. That means they have to be damn stupid to even be, even know about it. So there's no way you can see it from the road. Because my my front yard is all mowed, so. That's, I would like some consideration and I don't have to mow my backyard for the wildlife. If you don't give a damn about wildlife, then let it go to hell there, I guess is why it goes to the center. And I know you can easily say, well, it's only one small yard, about forty, like fifty feet, no big deal. But I think it's a big deal now. I got a few pheasants that show up in my yard every year. So I think that's kind of nice. So I maybe you don't even know, you're, you have a provision evidently that says you got to mow every time, even the backyard where no one can see it. So then I run this IQ degree and then the fence, I'll just have to do something about it. You don't like woven wire fence? I put it there to replace my the duration, I lost part of it at that time. But because of the fifty-five thousand dollar bank hack, not in Nevada, by the way, it was the bank out of town. It's never going to be recovered. I have fifty-five grand gone, just like that. So I'm the poorest I've ever been in my entire life. I've never been this poor ever. I didn't walk here because I ran out of money to buy gas for my cars. So in this heat, bank out of account, someone felt sorry for me to get it right here. So but I might walk back, go, you know, I I'm not going to ask unless someone won't watch it. That's it. That's up to you. And I said, I'm going to keep it short. I'm getting along, so. I hope you will consider, my main interest is the you know, why not keep some wildlife around right here in Nevada? Why not? What's so, what's so horrible about having some long grass for them? Because they ain't going to be there. If it gets mowed, they're they're going to go somewhere else. They ain't going to be in that short grass stuff, so. I never realized how much difference this was going to make right here in town. To get wildlife to come. It's not just pheasants, there's birds and everything, everything else that hang out as well, so. I hope you give some consideration. What I really ask for is don't make me mow that grass. Let let the wildlife happen. What's what's so horrible, terrible about have grass in the backyard? No one can see unless they get really snoopy and walk back there. Otherwise, they can't see it at all. So I hope you'll consider before Wednesday to not make me mow that backyard. And keep in mind, the front yard is all mowed. That's not the problem. And fans always have to deal with it somehow. I don't like it, but and I don't have any damn money is my problem. So until I have a little bit, I'll get it, but that and it's not your fault that I lost all that money. By the way, I get asked, well, you probably share the password. Nope, criminals now can figure it out by key on your software. Like when you're plugging into your computer, your password and the username. They they can get it that way now. They can also get the six digit authentication. I don't know if any of you know what I mean talking about. But where they give it, the bank gives you six digits and then you got to send that back to the bank. They can intercept that and still be right in your account. So nothing is safe anymore. Any of you doing online banking, I recommend you don't do it anymore because you might get hit someday. All right, I've thought long enough. Unless you, anyone has any questions? I hope you want to preserve the wildlife right here in this very town because I'm very proud of living here. So I would like to think that maybe there might be some considerations to not destroy a habitat of the wildlife. That's what I'd be doing on Wednesday if you're going to make me do this. That's all I'm going to say. So I hope you'll decide something before Wednesday because that's what I got right now. Tell Ryan to hold off for a while until you make a decision. If you will, I hope you'll consider doing that, hold off at least until you make a firm decision. But I hope it's to preserve the wildlife in this very community right here in town. So I've I've thought long about, I'll later that, and I hope you will give me support.
Right, pass or? You can, we'd like to discuss there.
I'll just remind council, it's not on the agenda for action, so you can provide some direction, but.
Brian, I assume there was a complaint generated from?
Yes.
Someone?
Yeah.
Someone didn't like it. I, it's been like that for four years. That's why I can't get over this. All of a sudden, it's horrible, terrible. I'm good. No one can see it unless they walk back behind her, you know. So they're they're trespassing on someone else's property to even know about this.
I think the whole problem with that, Rod, is that, you know, how do you differentiate between someone who is purposely keeping, you know, some wild tall grass in their backyard versus someone who just isn't mowing it at all and is doing it just to not mow it? You know, I appreciate what you're saying about wildlife, you know, I don't know if there's something where you could work it into a garden or something.
But Steve, why, why does it matter if it grows up when no one can even see it unless you're trespassing?
It's, it's, it's part of having standards for your city and and having people maintain those standards. I totally get what you're saying and I sympathize.
Well, I mean, as part of life, sir, if you don't decide to let me have that, you're just saying you don't give a damn about the wildlife.
Well, I, I.
That's what what I'm hearing.
The the council can't take any action on that, just like Eric. City attorney said here, so I mean, I don't know too much about that.
I don't know anything about the legalities, but why, you're in charge of the city, aren't you? This this group right here, am I right or wrong? Your charge?
Rod, the problem is they don't have anything to take action on. So there's, in order to take action, it has to be published on the agenda, so they don't have an action item on the agenda. So Aaron's glancing at the city code here and I think it's probably to see if there's anything that gives council.
Well, if if you just delay, one, it would help me until you make a decision. I'm hopeful, maybe there might be some light at the end of the tunnel here for me that give me a little more time and don't make Ryan make me do it so quickly. Don't you have some power to say, Ryan, you know, give him another week or something like that? You you have authority on that, don't you?
I'm going to see what our attorney advises here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even looking at the, looking at your, the session, but I mean, they, you can provide some directions to Ryan. I don't think it's good practice for you to, without a formal appeal, to be overriding your zoning enforcement officer. That being said, Ryan and I can talk after the meeting about next steps if there are any.
And if you wanted to formally appeal, what would it be his?
That is, that is what I'm going to talk through.
Okay.
That that was the sections that I have.
So well, to me, it should be a no brainer. I don't know how you can say, if you come and look at it, there's no weeds at all in it. There's no marijuana, there's no heroin or whatever. I don't even know how heroin grows. I don't know anything about that. It's nothing illegal at all.
And so they'll be in touch, Rod, because there will be a formal way to appeal the decision of the zoning official. And they'll be in touch with how you do that.
Okay, but in the meantime, if I'm forced to mow it, then the whole thing is, I'm spinning my wheels.
It would be a couple of bands.
What's that?
I'll have an answer for you tomorrow on how to proceed from here.
All right, well, I just wanted, wanted to delay, what, I'm sorry.
You got, you got there, you're.
Okay.
You're listening.
And I just, I'm a real wildlife person too. I mean, most of you don't know me that that well, but I've never caused any trouble in this community ever, you know. I'm a very solid citizen of the city of Nevada, Iowa, is all I can tell you. I'm just asking, friendly asking, I think my behavior has been very good here. I don't think I've done anything to yell and scream or anything like that. I'm just.
Yeah, so we appreciate that. Ryan, be in touch about about what you can do.
All right. Okay, go talk to me tomorrow then.
I will.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
So we'll continue on in the public forum.
Thank you.
Anything else here to speak?
Thank you, everybody, right?
Thanks, Brad.
I'm done.
And seeing then, we will close public forum, which moves us to old business A, form number ten fifty-six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending chapter sixty-two, general traffic regulations of the city code by establishing school zones in certain areas of town, third and final reading. We will approve.
Second.
Yes, and lots of seconds, Aaron. Any discussion? Seeing none, pass or please vote.
I just have one real quick question and I shut up. Or you're Ryan now?
Yes.
That's what I thought. I didn't recognize you, your glasses on, all right.
Different, I did prepare.
So we'll go to.
I'll I'll shut up.
Old business fee approved change order number three for twenty twenty-four street improvement project from construct incorporated in the amount of four thousand and twenty dollars.
Again, emotions.
Right, what's that, Steve?
I don't need to still be here, do I? I think I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
That's right. And notice that you have so please vote. That is approved. Case is C, group change order number one for F Avenue and G Avenue, H made all the lighting property from inroads in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars.
Vote to. Vote to.
Sorry, Sandy, Jason, discussion there. Seeing none, pass or please vote. That's approved. Case is D, resolution number ninety-three, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving reimbursement agreement, culinary engineering services of the United City Railroad Company. I will move to approve. Sandy, Steve, Aaron, any discussion? Seeing none, pass or please vote. That's approved. Takes us into new business B, resolution number ninety-five, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. A resolution to approve Iowa Ashfront Farm Lease Short, twenty twenty-four, Jeff Long met her.
Number two.
Sorry.
What's that? And Jason? Seeing no discussion, pass or please vote. That is approved. Takes us to C, resolution number ninety-six, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the story count and has interest grant agreement contract number twenty twenty-four oh six.
Move to. Second, same.
Melissa. Any discussion there? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved. Um, takes us to D, resolution number ninety-seven, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution establishing fiscal years twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven salary ranges for non-union staff.
I'll move to your group.
That ends it. Steve, Melissa, discussion there.
Can you, uh, can you maybe give us a little bit of detail on how the ranges were determined for that?
Um, Erin had a lot of the ranges, but she reviewed basically how we were doing the union contract. And we kind of compared that. We did it. We matched the same as the union contract.
Yeah, good. That's, that's kind of how I looked for you. I said it was pretty comparable, I guess. Yeah. Classic.
Anything else standing? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved. Um, takes us to E, discussion appropriate follow-up regarding H and A program against the T, you have an action form in front of you.
Soul Story County is working on S fourteen, South S fourteen. They're going to repave him nine miles of road. And basically it starts from where former Bell's entrance is on the south side up to the new Overpass Bridge. And we figured with Manass being there, it would just make sense to finish that last two to three hundred feet. Um, that way it was all done at the same time and we didn't have any broken up asphalt from that. So, um, Darren, Darren reached out to us a couple of months ago. I told him that when we get closer to the project, please let us know. And that's when we'll schedule a meeting with the Manass and make that decision. Joe and I met with them last week and talked with them about it. And that's when they got the call back for the fourteen thousand dollars.
Um, so I think they're doing an intermediate of that. It's basically kind of what they did on S four, or S twenty-seven. I wrote how the county did it. So it's, there's an intermediate, and I think they raised it up an inch and a half. Because it kind of freaked me out. I went out there and they were starting to grind and I said, you guys just pull stuff back there. And then he explained what it is.
I'll move to.
Second, that. Sandy, Steve. Discussion.
Makes a lot of sense.
Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to F, resolution number ninety-eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Resolution approving the agreement to pay user increase in waste water cost. Now, it's coming out of special meetings, so the formal agreement is in front of you this evening.
Well, that's approved.
Great.
Second.
Steve. Melissa.
Just hoping this buys a little time for the rest of it. Get the, no hard work out. People driving their feet to get it done.
And I spoke to Chad multiple times last week, but at the end of last week too, um, you know, we talked about, we heard from the public that it all possible, we, the council like to stay away from special meetings to do this, which, you know, gives you the lead time to get an ordinance in place, um, in order to have something in place for the September first billing. We'd have to have something final by next week, obviously. Um, at this point, probably not likely. So I mean, we're probably looking at three months realistically, um, if things move well. And so that's been the conversation on the final one that I've had. Um, we're meeting with our engineers after this meeting to further refine some of those debt numbers. Because that's really where the biggest disconnect is, is what's their debt number. I'm not, we'll probably just find out.
So there's not a way for us to get this? So, so you're saying it's gonna be about three months?
Unless you were going to waive readings or do special meetings, which I don't think that anybody's desire, we're able to do this. Um, ultimately, you know, the way the agreement is, is the amount that's paid is credited towards the, the final number that we'll be paying. Um, so it does give us time to kind of take the, the pressure down a little bit and have more constructive conversations hopefully and come up to consensus, because we've always been good partners. Can you want to say that way?
We, we want to make sure we give this entire deserves, uh, get the best possible outcome for the city. We're. Well, I mean, at this point, yes, we, uh, want to make sure we get it.
Anything else on that topic? And seeing none, council please vote. That's approved and brand that you're beginning. Um, so that will move us into reports, starting with our city administrator.
Uh, so what you have in front of you is an ordinance to amend the power of general, general vehicles and machinery to add the shipping and storage containers that we discussed the last meeting. Uh, I have yet to send it to Aaron. I just finished this Friday afternoon, so I'll send it over to Aaron. But I want you guys to look at it and feel free to give me any feedback or anything that, suggestions on changes. Uh, but I did pull some from other communities, and this is the one that, um, was probably the best out of several that I pulled. It's very similar to decorous. Um, but it, it is kind of long, but it definitely covers what we're trying to achieve on this. And then the other thing that's in front of you is the the business incentive program that we also discussed. This is something that the Beta Economic Development will match funds for. And then basically this is an incentive to bring new, new businesses into the community. So please let me know any suggestions or anything that you want changed on that as well. And then we also had a group instruction for Nineteenth Street Trail today. And I had a meeting this last week pertaining to a hotel. Hopefully we can provide more information in the near future that will bring a little bit better, uh, more information. Had our wastewater progress meetings, um, uh, for the Lur station. We will have our wastewater progress meeting on the facility this next week. So hopefully we'll figure out more on what the insurance adjuster uh, came up with when assessing the facility. We also had a train phone meeting this last week. The county was involved in that. And we're going to be getting more information from train bill. That way we can basically figure out how we can limit the blockages and everything in our community. So they're going to be pulling some numbers together and then we'll be able to provide more information once we have that.
Speaking of trains, so nineteen, eleven street, I think it's eleven street. It's got a little bolt.
That's the one that moves around on the west side. They walk further north. So, east side further north, it's northbound.
Yeah.
East.
I ran into a gentleman there that had wasted incentive with the community and he just kind of shook his head and said, yeah. Yeah, just know about it, just.
Anything else for Jordan? And then moving on, um, in my report, there is one thing that was in the consent agenda that I'm just not looking at. The letter for the cam lot grant extension, um, that I'll be signing. The packet says September thirtieth. The letter dissent says October thirty-first. So long as there is no objection, that's what is in your briefs. Otherwise, obviously been working on wastewater with our staff and with Burke. Um, one thing I did want to mention is since the last meeting, I did call our three county supervisors, um, because of bringing up the front line issue. You know, we had DOT sign off. Our engineers were really confident in that. But ultimately, you know, it was a three-year-old disagreement between our engineers and their engineers. And it wasn't really helpful to where we're going on, on, on today to re-litigate that. So ultimately, it was distracting from the ultimate point I was trying to make, which was the projected cost from five years ago is what the plant costs today, and that there wasn't a cost increase. And I was trying to communicate and, um, let my frustration misdirect the topic. Um, and so, you know, re-litigating the front line doesn't help us solve rates today. So I just want to let you all know, like, to call them down that conversation. Otherwise, any questions for me? Seeing none, council reports.
Other lady highway day, the evening, last Friday. Got really well, got a lot of, got a lot of your stuff on. She did, you got a little bit of change in what we're doing.
The Arts Commission, this meeting this week, and I would just reference the fact that Wade Press is the leader and it's, it's really going well. I think there's been a lot of people giving action underway, so. Look forward to more of that.
Go back to staff.
Just got a little things, uh, Sunday we'll be doing a training burn at two-twenty, which is Thirteen Street Extension. Uh, the Ames Public Borders Department has worked with us, so we'll be shutting that road down in five days, five seventy during the day while we're doing that burn. Uh, we have about seven fire departments that will participate, including the city of Ames, so it'll be a great training opportunity for us. Uh, the fireworks tents are up and selling. Uh, we did do the inspections today on local facilities and provided, uh, some extra education on our ordinance and provided some handouts for them. And they seemed very receptive to encouraging our community to be respectful of our ordinance and hold out on fireworks until the, the ordinance allows July first. Uh, other than that, there's nothing else.
That's right.
I don't really have anything other than our normal operation of maintenance.
Hi, council. Well, we are three weeks into our summer reading or summer learning challenge at the library. And, uh, we've got great numbers. Uh, it's been an overwhelmingly positive experience so far. And I mean both parts of that. It's been overwhelming and positive. Um, we have had huge turnouts this year. And it's so exciting and it's so fun. And we're all just exhausted at the end of the day. Um, we have three hundred and seventy-three kids signed up for the reading, and that's from, um, zero to eighteen. And that is about a hundred and seventy more than last year. Uh, so huge numbers. And then our programs have been our biggest, um, hit all years. Um, last year we had six weeks of programs. This year we have eight weeks of programs. Um, we had to, so Wednesdays at ten AM, um, we have a kids program for kids in grades K through fifth. And it's every week's different. This week they're making sun pictures. Uh, one week they made shrinky dinks. And so, uh, we had to double the, uh, allowance of people into it because it was so popular. And we still have waiting. So we've got about forty kids every Wednesday morning at the library doing something fun. Uh, and they're all waiting outside at about nine fifty. Um, so if you are in the area, just drive by the library and you'll see how popular we are. It's a lot of fun. Uh, our program attendance so far for three weeks is, oh, one thousand one hundred and sixty. And last year for all six weeks, it was one thousand seven hundred and nine. So we are really close. And I suspect after this week, we will have already beaten last week, last year's entire program in terms of attendance. Um, and we're getting so many people in the doors of the library. Our overall daily, uh, door count is up anywhere from at least twenty-five percent to up to fifty percent on a daily basis. Um, we are, so the first week of summer, we had almost fifteen hundred people at the library. Um, and then thirteen hundred the past two weeks. And on most weeks during the regular part of the year, we get like eight hundred to a thousand. So, uh, it's just been a lot of fun. And I owe a lot to Dylan, uh, Davidson, our youth services librarian. And Nicole McVeigh, our assistant youth services librarian, because they created a really fun program. And they marketed it in a way that they're getting a lot of really positive feedback from the community. Um, and then we've had great sponsors. Uh, we, part of the success of the kids reading is that they get coupons to local businesses when they need their reading bowl each week. So, uh, they can pick up Georgetown donuts or Starbucks ice cream cone or Cool Pass. Um, and they love getting to do that. And then it's a way for those families to support the rest of the community and the businesses in the community too. So we owe a lot to our high sponsors. We also got a lot of financial support from other, um, businesses, including um, Midstates and Story County, uh, Med Center as our two gold sponsors, along with, uh, or I'm sorry, Midstates was a final sponsor, along with the friends of the library. And then Story County Med Center and Community Clinic were our gold sponsors. So they donated so we could offer these great programs, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Just want to say we, uh, are looking forward to working with the city on the new downtown grants, so. So get moving on there. Aaron? I don't really have anything extra. I did provide a short, um, report in a packet just about the insurance that wants to talk about. We've been working with her to see what, if we do, will there be a kind of, that, that, like, what our goal might be. And then we're just preparing for your in.
Marla.
Good evening. Uh, Jordan had mentioned the pre-con meeting for the Nineteenth Street Trail Project. Um, I think they're thinking building to later part of July. I'll start Barrington Park, SRF sponsored project. Um, has been bid. We had pre-con on that a couple of weeks ago. That will start in mid-July as well. We do have all these ones in place now for the West Indian Creek piece of the SRF project. So we'll be working with the engineers and we'll hopefully see that, uh, go out to bid here in the coming weeks as well. Um, we were, uh, I may have received some Walmart money, um, from the Walmart three-point, uh, challenge. So we'll be having a Zoom meeting with those folks, um, on Wednesday. Learn a little bit more about that and try to see what it's all about. Uh, we've had a little bit of vandalism at Haver Park lately, so, uh, we've gotten it repaired. Uh, but we are leaving the restroom blocked unless there's a rental for a period of time, so we can't hurt that a little bit. So if you do get any questions, there calls after some. Uh, other than that, just our daily operation, actually. So we have to answer any questions again.
Any news? Thanks, Tim.
Um, happy to keep our decks are moving along. Of, of course, we always find surprises when we're getting into those.
Um, happy to keep our deals are moving along, of, uh, of course, we always find surprises when we're getting into those. Right now, there's night streets, uh, around the school, I think it's going well, um. That brought in in-depth repairs, I just ordered new structures to redo those in town. Uh, I'll be sweeping before the fourth of July and we'll be on doing some patching. To answer your question on that, on the machine that we have, there's a two-week life, uh. Chill life on that oil, so if you don't use that, then it's too base, then it goes bad. So I have to plan to get out there and do it, and it never works.
Uh, just, this is usual, no, nothing to report, unless you have questions.
I got a question for you. Uh, so our new, newer stores have been open for about four months now.
Wow, probably alright, yeah.
Have we had any uptick in any issues or anything?
Uh, no, we're talking about two smoke shops, okay, um, no appliance issues as far as sales or anything, uh, it's been without issue. Um, we did have one medical condition shortly after they opened. And they referenced using the product that they had purchased there, but it was legally purchased and, uh, treated. And at least, but that's the only thing I could even think that we tie back related to that, of course.
So we don't, I mean, so we checked them for, there's official appliance checks where we have, um. A person under the age of twenty-one made attempts, those are, um. Regulated and we do it consistently, but trying to pushing on everyone, so, um. That has not occurred for this fiscal year, or this calendar year yet, or, um, it's, it's something we do around the same time each year and. Um, we just have to be prompted by a, uh, so. Officials now is, uh, we've been doing spot checks in there and, uh, seeing the person and everything about the process, like, like official to ask and whatnot.
Ryan?
I'm gonna go to the last guy, any questions?
Karen? Ryan? Mike? Aaron, good. And so that concludes your reports on this council, that's our end to the final. We can move into closed session pursuant to Iowa code, section twenty-five, one I to divide with professional competency. An individual's appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to provide needless or injury to that individual or patients. That individual request.